Ready? All right, let's call to order the Tuesday, November 26, 2024, meeting of the Planning Commission. You all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kristin, can you do roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Bardis?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Chair Kempner?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame?
Here.
Commissioner Stapp noted that he would be absent. Commissioner Arntman?
Here.
And Commissioner Woods also noted he would be absent.
Thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion to excuse the commissioners missing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? They're excused. Approval of agenda. Does anyone have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Approval of the minutes of October 22, 2024. Any changes or motions?
Motion to approve minutes from the 22nd? Last month's meeting?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Communications.
There were just a couple copies of Michigan planners and commissioners who were absent previously. And then there is an email that we received in response to the public hearing.
Thank you. Citizens comments. This is the time for comments for items that are not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes. We ask that you state your name and city of residence. And again, for items not on the agenda.
Are we coming on the agenda, right?
On the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. Then we will move on to the public hearing. Do you want to give us a little update before I open the public hearing?
I had prepared a presentation. I don't think you have many people here. I could go through it quickly in case somebody's watching at home.
Sure.
So, one of the things that we wanted to, just for folks who were attending who hadn't been part of the process, is to go over what zoning ordinance is, which obviously all of you know as planning commissioners. But it's the local law that sets rules for what happens on the ground in terms of what can be built where, the parcel size, how big the buildings are, the parking, the landscaping. And usually each, on a map, which we have a draft zoning map over here, is each color is associated with a zone, and the zones have different rules. And one thing to note is that the rules that, if you recommended adoption of this document and the city council adopted it, these rules are not retroactive. Anybody who didn't comply with the rules, the newly adopted rules, would be what's called nonconforming. And I know that you've dealt with a lot of nonconformities in Berkeley because it's a built city. But just to note that we can't go back and fix the mistakes. But I know the steering committee, who I very much want to thank for your service, really talked about what those had been and really looked to craft these proposed rules in order to, that those situations wouldn't happen again. And why did we need to rebuild the zoning ordinance? Well, one, it was last updated in 1993. So I think Clinton was president then. And then it's been amended often, has a lot of inconsistencies. And it also implements the master plan. So you had a significant rewrite of your master plan a number of years ago. And you've had a downtown plan adopted, design guidelines adopted, the zoning ordinance as a mechanism to get all those things to be something that you look at through every single site plan. Also to comply with federal and state law, including case law, and delivering the type of and quality of development that Berkeley wants. We've been through a two-year process. And again, we started off with a group meeting, a joint meeting between you and the city council. And we've done that two more times over the process. As I mentioned, the steering committee, who Lisa and Lisa and Kristin were part of, worked really hard and met for, I think, 11 months straight?
I think a full year.
A full year to really rewrite as a group the zoning ordinance. And now we're here at the public hearing. What I want to stress is that this is by no means the last stop. The state process is that you make a recommendation and city council adopts. So you shouldn't make a recommendation of this until you're comfortable with everything that's there. And we gave you also in the packet a summary memo of changes that we had gotten from your staff and also from you and other city officials. It's a pretty long laundry list. So one of the actions you could take tonight would be to make a recommendation to city council either as is or with changes. Or you could say, look, we really want to see it again with all these changes listed, made, and see a clean copy, and then we might feel comfortable with going forward. And some other things might come up during the public hearing that would be items of discussion as well. So there are a couple of things that are proposed to stay the same. The community centerpiece zoning districts, so where your schools are, where your community center are, where your parks are, and the cemetery zoning district and location regulations. There are some things that are proposed to change just a bit. That two-family district that you have is going to expand onto Princeton in areas that are currently zoned RM. But if you walk down that block, you'll see that it's all duplexes. So it's in the draft to make that a two-family district because that's what's on the ground. That two-family district has design standards for duplexes. And we've gotten a suggestion also that for the RM, the multiple family, that there should be design guidelines for those as well. And then, but basically RM and RMH, which is Oxford Towers, except for Princeton, are the same location. What was changed or tweaked is the parcel sizes and the setbacks. And those were really scaled to match what's existing. Because in some cases, they didn't fit. They were either too big or too small. There's a bunch of big changes in here. The left-hand column there are things that we're not going to dive, or don't have slides in later in the presentation. So I'm going to say a little bit more about those and then go into the other column in a little more detail. One is to allow accessory dwelling units with design requirements. That was specified in the master plan. That was something that the city wanted to tackle and so looking to implement it here. Regulations for specific uses. So there's a whole new article about that that has them all together. They are scattered all around your current zoning ordinance. And sometimes they're embedded in districts, sometimes they're after the schedule of regulations. So we said, okay, let's put them all together in one place where you can find them and reference them. And also, there's standards for different types of zoning ordinance amendments. You have map amendments, you have text amendments. And also with site design-based districts, you're going to have street types. And so those might change, and that might actually be, that's another amendment. So those each are proposed to have their own standards for making decisions. And that's something I want to stress that the steering committee was very adamant about is looking that every single time the planning commission had to make a decision, there were standards, and whether all of them applied or some of them applied. And I think that if this is adopted as is, is a big improvement to help you when you're going through that decision-making. So I'm going to dive into the other ones. Single-family zoning districts. Right now you have four districts. All of those were decided based on Platts that were done almost 100 years ago or more. And there weren't that many differences between them. So we took and compressed them into two districts. And it's not, it only affects a small number of lots in terms of where their rear yards might get a little bit bigger. And we don't think that that would result in that many, in the ability to create a lot of new residential lots. Then you heard me say site design-based zoning. Right now you have use-based zoning. So in every single zoning district, all the yards are the same and it lists what uses are there. Well, if you look at your map over there, you'll see that aside from your neighborhoods, when you get on your corridors, on Woodward, on 11 Mile, on 12 Mile, on Coolidge, on Greenfield, you've got a lot of different kinds of lots. You've got big, you've got middle, you've got big, you've got medium and small. So the proposal is on them to have those, have uses and yards be dictated by the type of street and a site layout. And have that dictated by street and parcel size. And then I'll explain that a little bit further. And then also in that site-designed-based zoning, using use groups instead of a laundry list of uses, because you've got a lot of different ones. And then having design standards that are based on the downtown design guidelines and the master plan for the downtown. And in those, sometimes there are standards and sometimes there are guidelines in terms of implementing those. And again, that was something that the steering committee discussed quite a bit. So in having these site-designed districts, instead of having a different district for 11 Mile, industrial, and some of the gateway areas on 11 Mile that are zoned that. So these are really dynamic places that have a whole bunch of different uses. So we're going to make this a flexible area which allows a lot of different uses, but maybe not a whole ton of building types. So because you can't really get that tall on 11 Mile. And so on something like, that's a small site, like that's outlined in yellow, you would have a live-work or a small non-residential layout. It would allow retail offices, restaurants less than 20,000 square feet, but no drive-throughs and upper-story residential. When you get to that medium site, which is outlined in green, and that's more the typical sites that you have, that could be live-work, institutional, so like a church or you do have some, I think, social halls on 11 Mile, or an automotive use or an industrial layout. And you would allow retail office, restaurants of any size, multiple family, auto, more intense commercial and industrial uses by special land uses. And so on those ones where you had special land uses, you would have some more scrutiny. So like for the multiple family, you may not always want that next to something else, or you may not always want an industrial district in some places. So you have some ability to have some scrutiny there. Then on Greenfield and residential corridor on 11 Mile, took and made more explicit what's in the zoning ordinance anyway. Right now your zoning ordinance says on Elwood, you can only have a single-family house. So we made that it's a small site on a residential street, which is Elwood. You'll see that yellow that's over on the right-hand side, that you can only have a single-family house there. But when that same type of lot is facing onto Greenfield, that could have a duplex or an office-type use in it, or a different type of layout. On a medium site, which is in the green, that could have one to two stories. It could be two-family attached residential, office, or commercial uses. And then the large site is only a double frontage lot. So it has to be a lot that has both frontage on Elwood and on Greenfield. Right now you only have one of those. And that's a place where you could have more residential uses and more residential buildings, kind of more in a complex. But the design guidelines mandate that facing Elwood, there's no vehicular access. It's got to be the same house and the same design as a house. And those larger ones that are taller, those have to face Southfield, and the parking has to be interior. And so it's taking all those design guidelines that you talked about in the master plan and putting them into code. So when, if you ever got something where people wanted, somebody wanted to develop something like this, it matches what the community said that they want to see in terms of design. And then on Woodward Gateway and Downtown zoning districts, there are two different street types. There's the Downtown A, which basically it's not a curb cut, and that's where your sidewalks are much wider. And so mandates that and keeps it, it's only like about three blocks, that Downtown A Street, and it's your walkable core. And then the rest of the streets are called walkable streets. And they would have allowed curb cuts. But basically, you can see up here, there's large sites where a whole plethora of things are available and you could put multiple buildings. A small site, which could be mixed-use or a multiple-story layout, a retail or office below 20,000 square feet. Or a medium site, that's highlighted in green, that's actually, the lot that we highlighted is a gas station. And so that would be allowed by special land use. And so you could have improvements to that existing one. Or if, for some reason, somebody wanted to buy, wanted to build another gas station, you have the ability to do that, and it would be a special land use. So you would have a little more scrutiny. But let's say for some reason that gas station goes away and is remediated, a retail building could go there. A big change also is a parking overlay zoning district. In the master plan, we had, the city had specified places where parking was planned to be allowed to help buildings be improved or expanded. And talking about it felt like an overlay was the best way to go. And what that is, is the underlying zoning. Sometimes the underlying zoning is like a woodboard. So that, that site design basis district, but sometimes it's residential. And so to allow that, those uses could continue or could be developed there. But it's just saying the overlay, that could also be developed as a parking lot. But that parking lot is a special land use. So again, you have a notice, you have discretionary standards, and greater control in terms of how you manage or say yes or no to that. A big change, which I hope is welcome, is that you actually will have landscaping regulations. Right now you just have one standard in site plan. So we have screening between uses. And the diagrams up there show how those screening between uses is pegged to the depth of the lot. Because your lot depths vary a lot. And so you only have so much room. And that's how it was decided that this is the best way to go forward. Also parking lot landscaping, street trees, and then general site landscaping as well. Another big change was parking. So there are a lot more provisions for flexibility because that's one of the things we know that we deal with a lot. So there's provisions and specifications for shared-use parking and what those shared-use parking agreements would look like. An on-street parking credit where the parking spot is right smack dab in front of the building. The opportunity to allow lease parking in municipal lots, that's particularly, that might be particularly advantageous for second-story residential in one of these downtown or site-design-based districts, that the planning commission can waive up to 15% of required spaces. And there are standards in there that have to be met. And also requirements of the applicant to bring information to prove that that's needed. The parking requirements table was entirely updated based on the parking study that was done. And also, non-residential uses and non-residential zoning districts are exempt from parking if within 500 feet of a municipal parking lot. I think right now you have that same exemption, but only for 200 feet? 200, 300 feet?
It's within 300 feet, I think, and only on the same side of the street.
Only the same side of the street, yep. You require bicycle parking. And then there's an allowance of, and regulations for electric vehicle charging stations. For site plan approval, there's a process change. So you're very familiar with how that works. What's proposed is that there's an optional sketch plan and a pre-application meeting, the sketch with staff. And then a preliminary site plan review by the planning commission. So you get like a three-quarter baked potato. And then the final site plan, with all the engineering and everything like that, goes through your, is proposed to go through your community development director.
And just really quickly, it is actually currently 500 feet.
500 feet, thank you. Okay. So for, also, plan unit developments have been controversial and difficult decisions. And they are difficult decisions. So we really tried to change the process so that an applicant can get a lot more clarity upfront. By having that pre-application meeting is not optional, it's proposed to be required. They have an optional meeting with the neighbors. And then also, there's preliminary and final development plan approval, both by planning commission and city council. And then we worked on that recognizable and material benefits. That's the list up there, and it's in, it's in the proposed zoning ordinance to really define what those are. And so you can have, communicate that better to applicants, but also it's clear to you and whoever comes after you on the planning commission when you're making that decision. So now we're back to the end, we're back to the process. Again, wanted to emphasize that there are two more steps after tonight by state law, your recommendation and city council's adoption. But for the public hearing, it's really for folks who are here to share their concerns, maybe a compliment or two if they have them, or any questions. And I just want to, and those are your actions. But I really want to thank everybody who's been involved. This has been a great collaborative process. And I was telling Kristin before the meeting, I felt like because so many people had been involved and really invested time and thought, that you're going to have something that's tailored to your community. It's not like you went off and paid a consultant. We put a bunch of stuff together and then two years later, you're going to say, what the? But I'm sure there will be tweaks, but also want to thank everybody.
Does any, before I open the public hearing, are there any questions, clarifications that you need? Not so much in the discussion, but clarification before I open a public hearing, part of it?
One clarification. Our, then, is the memo that we have with the memo, oh, sorry, let me back up. The draft ordinance that's in review dated October 10, 2024, is that inclusive of anything within the memo?
No.
No.
That has been untouched. And so at the end of that memo, there's a one, two, three, there's a long, there's a long table. It's pages three to 11. Those are all of the changes that have been suggested by staff or officials. And then we flagged 99% of the time, we'd agreed with them. Every so often, we had a change or tweak to those. And then in the memo that's dated November 20th, we highlighted four things that were kind of bigger discussion items that came out of what people had discussed and really, we would want some, at a minimum, we'd want some direction from you on two-family dwelling requirements, those rear yards and design-based districts, special land use approval for building height and deviations from design standards.
Tonight?
Tonight.
Okay. So we have four items that need recommendations. And then the table of staff revisions that you've commented on.
Yeah.
They're there post, they're there after the October 10 date to be incorporated.
Right.
So that would be the with revisions.
Yeah. So you could direct us to say incorporate everything in that table, including your recommendations. And then these are our decisions on two-family dimensional requirements and rear yards. Are you done?
Yes, thank you.
Can you help us understand what happens to existing unoccupied spaces if the zoning district changes?
Oh, okay. So an existing vacant lot? Or is it, that it's an existing vacant lot or an existing vacant building?
Building, unoccupied building.
Okay. So the existing vacant, unoccupied building?
Obviously, we have some, we're going to be talking about it. So I want to have an understanding before I hear the comment.
Okay. So the existing unoccupied building, if it, the building itself was nonconforming, so let's say it didn't fit the setbacks, it would retain that nonconformity. So it could be used as is, adaptively reused. But because there's no use in there, it would have to abide by the use requirements that would be in the newly adopted ordinance. So in this?
We can't revert back to the old use that was there and relied upon. Because it's vacant, and it doesn't matter how long of the vacancy, because it's vacant, then they have to, the use has to comply as soon as our ordinance becomes effective.
Yes.
There's no variance opportunities because it's a use?
No, you have use variances.
Okay.
So, and you decided to retain the use variance. So the zoning ordinance currently has use variances, and you decided to retain that use variance. So let's say this goes forward and, for the sake of conversation, in the downtown, on a Downtown A Street, first-floor office is not allowed. They could petition for a use variance under that set of circumstances and have to prove that they meet that set of standards, which are pretty high. The other option would be for them to come forward with something like a PUD, where you could be flexible on the uses as well. And in that particular case, you might look at preserving the marquee as a community benefit. So there would be options for, would be going forward. Would it be easy for the developer? Likely not. Would it make their financiers comfortable? Likely not.
Do you know how many uses, how many properties right now are vacant that might be affected in the same manner? Any idea? Okay.
I mean, it's a constantly changing number.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
Any other questions or clarifications before I open the public hearing?
All right.
I will open the public hearing at 7:27. And just like with citizen comments, we'll ask that you come up, say your name, your city of residence. And then you have three minutes to tell us what you feel.
Thank you for everyone. My name is Dino Bistulindridis. I am a royal resident. I shop, eat, I am a property owner in the city of Berkeley. I'm a representative of one of, I'm a representative of the ownership group who owns the old vacant Ritey property on 12 Mile. And thank you for all your help, and Kristin specifically throughout this process. We're looking at several options to sell or backfill that space. One in particular which came to our attention was a physician's group, the largest rheumatology group in the state of Michigan, who is very interested in moving their offices in there, about 7,500 square feet, keeping a retail component and certainly keeping a marquee, of which we've been telling everyone that that's something that the city would really like to stay there, the residents and myself as well, because I, like I said, I am part of this community as well. We understand the new zoning that's coming forward is not allowable for first-floor medical offices. I've seen, so I, you know, want to put it out there or, you know, request that that be reconsidered, that first-floor medical office be allowable in that downtown district. I have had other interest in the property.
Did you guys hear what I said before?
Yes.
And I've had other interest in property. It's a fluid, I would say, process. I'm fielding calls, showing it, I've shown it three times this week already. But, you know, specifically to this group, they've gone, you know, pretty far along. But we have this hurdle, and, you know, I'd like to, you know, see it be considered. And they, you know, they're going to bring, they say, you know, 100-plus patients a day at their current practice in Rochester, they're moving there from their current practice in Rochester down here. They're going to bring 100-plus patients a day, and they plan on more. You know, like I said, it's not just going to be simple. You know, like I said, it's not just gonna be simply that component, they're going to have other, you know, parts of the building to retail. They plan on keeping the, the retail on Twelve Mile. You know, this is preliminary, obviously, but, you know, wanted to, you know, you know, have that addressed at this meeting, and, you know, continue the conversation.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Did you have anything else to share?
No, that's it, I mean, thank you for everything, by the way, specifically Kristen, throughout this process, so.
Thank you. And since I don't see anybody bashing down the door to come in, I'm going to close the public hearing at seven thirty. Actually, before I do that, I'm going to ask Kristen, do we have any additional emails for the public hearing?
Nope.
Okay, so I'm actually closing it at seven thirty. Okay. Where do we want to start? Do you want to start by talking about these, or these four questions, or do, does, you just want to talk about it as a whole, what are you all feeling?
Can we talk briefly about the Rite Aid property?
Sure.
So, I guess I, my recollection is that really City Council wants it to be more walkable, and prefers not to have medical and office. But, I noticed that when I went back through after receiving the correspondence, that there is office there. And so, I wonder why we're treating medical and office differently for first floor in that area, and I don't recall the answer to this.
I think they're both special land, well, is medical even allowed at all? Office is a special land use, isn't it?
I don't think so.
Can I jump in, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, Megan? So there, there was discussion back and forth on this at the steering committee. At one point, we had it as a special land use. What ultimately ended up happening in the October draft is it's listed as permitted uses. There is still some concern out there that maybe we don't want the core part of our downtown to, to have office as a first-floor use. So in the chart, you'll notice, there's a suggestion that upper-story office be permitted in the downtown district, in the downtown A section, so there's a small section of Twelve Mile that's listed as a downtown A street in the downtown district. It's, I don't know, maybe three or four blocks?
Yeah, yeah.
And this, the, the table lists that as upper-story office as a permitted use, with no first-floor office permitted in that section. And so, that's what I think the, the public hearing comments are about. Is that something that the Planning Commission and ultimately the City Council wants to stick with? And then office would be a permitted use, and is in the draft a permitted use in all of the other sections of what we would consider a DDA district?
A permitted use on the first floor?
Correct, thank you. Or, does the Planning Commission feel like that core section of downtown, they do not want to see first-floor offices? Keeping in mind that, that this is a balancing act between maybe types of offices, right? Because you could have the professional office that brings in maybe a few workers, but doesn't have a lot of foot traffic and other things like that. Maybe that's a little bit different than a medical office that has patients regularly coming. Or maybe the preference is, we would rather see more typical active downtown uses in those couple blocks. So, that, that is a point of discussion for the group.
And can I add one thing?
Yeah.
Also, with Beaumont being so close, that creates more of a demand for medical office than your typical downtown. And so if it's a permitted use on the first floor, then what you have, the danger of happening is that that becomes the predominant use. Because it's a permitted use, it just comes in, and so, it could very much change that character of downtown. Or, with a large medical office building, also bring a lot of traffic, maybe mostly vehicular, to downtown. So I think that's a balance to think of as well, is where are those appropriate in terms of people coming, driving, parking? Because the, the, the medical office does bring people who would probably have other trips, and bring them to downtown Berkeley where maybe they hadn't been before. But on the flip side, if you've got two whole blocks that are medical office on both sides, then that is gonna have an impact that's different than the retail mix with restaurants and a little bit of office that you have now.
And one other thing I think to keep in mind is, this is listed in the current, offices, first-floor offices listed in the current ordinance as a special land use. And that, really, I don't think is the right vehicle for how we limit these, because the standards of a special land use don't really lend themselves to the impacts of an office building.
I, I guess I just, I'm, I'm looking for some clarity for myself about why office and not medical office?
Why?
Why is, why is this general office allowed first floor, but the medical is not?
No, so the, the table suggests that there would be no office on the first floor in those, that core downtown area.
Medical or general.
Anything.
Yeah.
What do you know offhand? I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that the downtown master plan talks about office only being on the second floor in that area.
I can look, I don't recall offhand.
I can appreciate the fact that office is different than medical office. Because when we've, when the conversation first started, I'm like, well, medical office, I think that'd be great for the downtown, because it would draw in, it's not like a, you know, a engineering firm, or you got the same twenty people coming in, and, you know, maybe they go out to lunch. But, if you have a medical office, you have lots of different people coming in. But I can also appreciate what Megan said, I don't think we necessarily want our downtown area being all medical, you know, Beaumont campus number two either.
And I agree, and I think that the, the solution is to revert back to a special land use, so each use is evaluated for its own characteristics. I'm not saying that's, I'm not suggesting, I'm, I'm thinking out loud.
And so this is in opposing the idea that it's just not permitted in the core A.
As a first, as a first floor.
Right, it's just not permitted at all right now.
My feeling for what it's worth is that, that core downtown is really meant to be an active kind of area, right? We have transparency to try and like make sure that we can see, and, and, and it feels alive and active, and when you put offices in, it becomes less.
Yeah, it depends on the office, that's where I'm going with it. Right?
Well, all offices are gonna be, at five o'clock, offices are shut.
Closing.
Yeah, they're closed. You don't get that vibrancy that you get if it's a restaurant, and people are sitting outside and drinking coffee, or, you know.
Or an escape room, or a selfie thing, or something that's going to happen in those later hours.
But I guess, I, I guess there could be medical office uses that are open later, that are circulating a lot of people in and out, that would generate the traffic, the foot traffic that we're looking for. That's why I'm saying maybe it's a case-by-case basis. Because I could see an engineering firm that doesn't have the, the visitors, that has just employees working there, okay, I can see that. But I could also see situations where it's a dialysis place, and people are coming in on a regular basis, and they're coming from out of town to come, I don't know, I guess I'm just.
People come in and out, because that logic then, you could apply to dispensaries. I mean, they have people coming in and out, but they're not allowed downtown, so, like, I, I don't necessarily think people coming in and out equals that, I think what you're thinking, in my thought.
And I don't know that after a doctor's appointment, and, and we have lots of them between me and my daughter, that we stay and go shopping, right? We're usually like done doing our doctor's appointment, and then going home.
Think about where most of your medical doctor, most of my medical doctors' offices are on, you know, the Beaumont campus proper, or it's in a, in a place in Troy, and there's, it's just a big building with a bunch of doctors in it, you know? It's not like there's a restaurant first floor or something.
Yeah, I go to Henry Ford in Royal Oak, I go in and out, and I think it's kind of funny they put it there, because I would go wherever it was, but they use that downtown space for a hospital, which, I get it, it's close for jobs and stuff, but it's also kind of in a weird spot, and there's a big parking structure there too.
Yeah.
Like, it could have been maybe used a little differently, but, this is my thought. What's the, I guess the A Street or the downtown core? What are the limits on that?
It is Twelve Mile from Wakefield to Gardner, so.
Does it include all four corners of Wakefield, or?
So, here's Wakefield.
It's the post office, right?
Yeah, and the bank, and the post office.
To Gardner, so from.
Yeah, it's for my dentist's.
Okay, Wakefield and Gardner.
And the master plan for downtown listed offices just generally as a use that would be expected to continue, but it didn't specify upper or lower story.
Okay. Not even those, in those character area parts?
Not that we can find with a quick scan, I can keep looking.
Should we feel like we need to marinate on this and talk about other things? Do we have a, a strong feeling at this moment?
I think we should go through Megan's letter and marinate on it for a little bit.
Can I just ask, Megan?
Yeah.
What are your thoughts on, understa, well, you, you probably know all of us more than we know us.
At least from your experience in other communities.
Yeah, and I sense that, no matter what we say here, City Council feels strongly about wanting retail in those spaces.
And I, over the course of this process, and also the master plan process, I ha, I know of at least one City Council person who has been very concerned about downtown Berkeley becoming Beaumont's second campus, and not wanting that to happen. And looking at some bigger properties, not necessarily this one, that were being underutilized as something where it could come there, and they, they felt that it would have an impact. For me, from a planning point of view, this is a hard zoning question, because you do want the street to be active. However, if you keep on taking these non-active uses out, what I've seen happen in downtowns is that a building will sit vacant, because a retailer can't come in, or that building can't be easily retrofitted for that, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, I, my instinct is that keeping that downtown core, having second-floor office, medical or general, would be, I, I, I would recommend that, and then allow those office uses to spread out in those other corridors. But that one area, you have wide sidewalks, that's your core of your downtown, it's built that way, it's meant to be that way. It's almost like the Berkeley landmark, really, that, that particular location. As you've had a developer come to you and say, this is who's coming to me, again, there are other mechanisms that could help, that are more difficult for the developer, such as a PUD. And then, those things could be negotiated, but I can understand from their point of view how that's, that's tough to undertake, especially when you're having multiple clients come through. So, there's a risk and reward that every community goes through in terms of, do you want it filled? And come what may, whatever come what may, it's fine? Or, do we want it filled in a certain way? And then if you only want it filled in a certain way, then you have to be prepared to wait, and you have to be prepared to deal with some vacant buildings.
Or a less desirable use that still is allowed.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So I really don't have a great answer for you. But that's my lay of the land.
Yeah, no, that's helpful. Okay, we can marinate.
All right, so while we're marinating, let's look at this list, two-family dwelling dimensional requirements.
Yeah, basically, it was flagged that, hey, we have, in the two-family, we have different things than, that we have in, you know, the site design-based districts. And, at first we had, in the R-two, we had something for single-family, and something for R-two, and, and something for duplexes. And then, we were told, put them together, but we kept them different in the site design district. So we could either go back to the first thing in the R-two and have regulations for single-family and regulations for two-family. We could change that two-family dwelling layout in the site design districts to match the two-family dwelling requirements in R-two. Or we could just not change the draft and know that there's an inconsistency.
And the, if I recall, because I think this is one of those things that I flagged, the two-family dwelling layouts in the site design-based districts were more burdensome, I guess, like, we required more setbacks.
And things like that.
Right.
But also generally, those are things that are gonna be on a major corridor, so they're gonna be on.
Eleven Mile.
Eleven Mile or Greenfield, and they're gonna back up to establish single-family residential. Whereas where the R-two is, a lot of times, they are like right across the street from single-family homes, and they have the same lot sizes, they have the same pattern.
I don't see any issue in matching the two-family dwelling with the R-two district, do you see a downside to doing that, from a planning perspective?
The only downside I can see is that it might get a little confusing on the zoning administration side, because you just have to know whether it's a duplex in the R-two or in the site design, but I think your staff can handle it.
Do you have concerns with that? Do you have a preference, as far as administration goes?
Not a strong preference, I think we could handle it either way.
So the, the first option that you listed for us would be to increase lot width and size requirements, meaning decreasing the buildable area?
So, basically, that would, then you would create standards for duplexes that match what's in the two-family dwelling layout in the site design district. So they have, they have bigger yards and a bigger lot width.
So, the building envelope is smaller?
Yes, if you're, have the same-sized lot, yes. But you're requiring a bigger lot.
In the site design, but.
Yeah, yeah, and we're saying you could do that in the R-two, you could require a bigger lot for a duplex, and then have bigger yards.
I think I was leaning towards the, I put, I put in here, add a column to the R-two, oh, option one, I was leaning towards the option one. Like, add a column to the R-two, but I think that would be confusing, that's probably not the simpler way to do it.
So you're thinking, taking the, transferring the R-two district setbacks to the site design-based district, two-family dwelling units?
In the case of a two-family dwelling, like a two-family dwelling has the setbacks that are required in R-two, wherever you would put it. So if it's in multifamily, it would have the same setbacks, if it's in, on Greenfield, it would have the same setbacks as required on Princeton.
So my thought was, two-family dwelling versus R-two district, to me, I don't see why we would treat them different.
Okay.
That's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, it's just.
That's where I was.
Yeah, it's just, the two-family was larger, more conservative. Is that, did we put that in there for a reason, because we wanted a little bit more setbacks for two-family dwellings?
Well, R-two is multi, isn't it?
No, R-two is two-family, so, oh, it's only. Single, two, and multi, right?
Yeah, it's just that little area on Princeton, right?
It's just single-family and two-family.
Yeah, just a tiny stretch.
Yeah. So what we could do is really option one, so we add a column back in R-two that has, in that table, it'll have. something for single-family, and these are the minimum lot size, minimum lot width, these, and these are the yards, and then have something for a two-family, that's minimum lot width, minimum lot size, and that would match the site design layout that's currently in, for a duplex that's currently in the site design districts. That's what I'm hearing from you.
So devil's advocate is, weren't we trying to make duplexes match the requirements of a single-family home? So we were not making them have bigger setbacks, or, or bigger widths, right? So my thought was, when I was looking through stuff, I went, oh, look, on Greenfield, I think it was, you had to have a sixty-foot lot in order to put a duplex. Why does that have to be larger than it has to be on Princeton?
You're suggesting the opposite option, too.
That's where I was leaning, too.
Okay, so, and we can do that. So option two, okay.
I noticed, too, I don't know if I got picked up in the, in others' comments, but the diagram for that is, the diagram shows, let's see, let's make sure I'm looking at the right diagram. Um, the diagram that's on five dash nine, um, shows a minimum lot area of five thousand square feet, and I think it should be four thousand?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and then the rear yard says, I got that. Wait, hang on, I'm sorry.
Look at all those numbers.
But they're, they're not very neat, and I apparently can't understand them now that I'm looking at them again. And I thought there was something else that didn't jive with the, the text.
And we'll go back and double, so, because there's gonna be changes, we'll go back and double-check every diagram.
And we commented, uh, on a lot of those things, too, in the staff review.
Gotcha.
So just you and I.
I know, yeah, so how are we feeling about that, uh, going with option two, where all duplexes have the standards that we are giving them in that Princeton R2 district?
Regardless of where they are.
Regardless of where they are.
That's fine, sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Rear yards, site design-based districts.
Okay, so, I, I feel like, I, I know at least two people had a great temptation to take every single site layout, lay them out all in the, next to each other, and see how they look.
Yeah, not me.
I had a temptation, but to be honest, I didn't get to it, so.
And, so there was a question of like, well, you know, gee, some of these, um, are fifteen feet, but then some of them are twenty-five, why, wh- when's the difference? And especially for a duplex or a single-family home, you're asking for a much bigger rear yard than you're asking for, for, let's say, an industrial layout. Um, and the reason for that is that, so dwelling units tend to have, want to have rear s- outdoor space, and that's private space, rather than having it in the front. So if you think about how, you know, you go outside and then you have your privacy in the rear yard, and, but in a front and a side yard, you don't have as much. Um, and so that's usually the reasoning for those rear yards to be much bigger than something in an industrial, especially in your city, because you don't have very deep lots, so you don't have a lot of room to play in this. The parking tends to be on the side, especially along your corridors. Um, what we've done is, um, your current zoning usually has the minimum rear yard is ten feet, and every single case, that's, if, for a non-residential district, and every single case, we increased that to fifteen feet, um, to give more room for that buffer, because you're gonna be requiring walls and things to be built, um, for, for landscaping. But we, I, I, I really see why you wanna see all of them together, so the things that we propose would be that we can create a table for all the layouts and notes as to why that there's differences, and that's something that is like a companion to the zoning ordinance, but I wouldn't want that adopted with the zoning ordinance, because there's just too many, if you change something over here, then you have to change something over here, and by doing this for twenty years, I've seen too many times where people forgot what was over here, um, so we could have that companion. Um, the other thing to do, and we monkeyed with this a little bit when we first did the site design layouts with the steering committee, is put all the site design layouts together in one section, and then just reference them back in each zoning district, so that then they're uniformed. So there's one automotive layout, there's one industrial layout, there's one, you know, non-residential multi-story layout, um, that, what, what happens then is then that creates flipping, um, and that also gives you less ability to tailor for each district. Um, because for instance, in the downtown district, you already have big sidewalks that are there, and it's built, the, your building lines are at zero setback, it makes sense, but on Eleven Mile in the Flex District, you may not want all your buildings, we usually have a five-foot minimum setback to give any new building, to give room for you to increase that sidewalk and street trees there, that when you walk down that street, that's why it's not as pleasant as maybe if you're walking down Coolidge, or parts of Twelve Mile where there's buffers with the trees, or landscaping. And then, um, or we could just leave it as it is and be uncomfortable. And you may have another option, those were the three options we felt going forward.
Can I ask a couple questions?
Yeah.
On the first option, this accompanying
Guide line.
Cheat sheet?
Yeah, cheat sheet.
What, where, how do you propose that be used? So, in twenty years, we refer back to that?
No, I would say that that's just something that comes along with the zoning ordinance when you're looking at it, instead of a planning commissioner or city council attempting, a city council member attempting to make a compendium of their own to make sense of it, we're just giving them a cheat sheet.
Just for the purposes of adopting the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, and, and then I would think that the staff might keep it.
For posterity, right, because there's a lot of these things where we're looking at what was in there from thirty years ago, and goes, why did, why did they do this?
But the whole reason we're not incorporating into the zoning ordinance is so there's not a future inconsistency with that and any amendments.
Right, but I think we would keep it as a record of the adoption of the ordinance.
I think it'd be helpful for, uh, because the site base, or the site design base districts is a new thing for us, so, and it's, it's, it's pretty different, there's a lot of nuance to it and stuff, I think it'd be very helpful to have it as a cheat sheet, um, so we get familiar and comfortable with the new ordinance.
Because I was at home, looking at all these different numbers going, like, I, I can't even make sense of this.
I actually.
It's here, it's here, it's there, it.
Because I'm an engineer, I tried to make a spreadsheet, and I couldn't. It was, it, there's a lot of moving parts to it.
Yeah.
But Megan, you're saying, anything that's duplicated out of the ordinance as a separate and adopted falls risks of not being updated correctly?
It's just when you have the same regulations in two different places.
Right.
So, like, the temptation might be to, to say, okay, I mean, or we could make that cheat sheet and just have tha- that in the ordinance, the problem with that, as that in the ordinance, is that, again, you don't have, it's not, that's tailored to somebody who's looking at it overall, and really, when somebody's looking at it to develop property, they just wanna go and say, what applies to me?
Right.
They don't w- want the whole breadth, or they're fine, most developers are fine with, with these form, these, these site design-based things, they're fine with, oh, I can do X, Y, or Z, and looking at them like that. Um, sometimes when it gets in the table, it gets a little.
So the cheat sheet would just be something that you provided us to help us get over this hurdle of newly adopted, newly everything, um, separate from the ordinance, just like here, for now, until you get your bearings, because it will change, because ordinances always change, so we don't want it adopted, right?
Yeah, we would not want it in two different places, that would be my, my least preferential option.
I guess I'm just struggling with this, we're gonna have a cheat sheet for us, but for future users who don't understand this, they're not gonna have the luxury of a cheat sheet.
We could keep that updated as just a piece that we use, but the concern would be if twenty years from now, somebody says, we think the setback should be ten and not five, and they only have changed it in one place, and they don't change the, the adopted chart, now we have no idea what the required setback is.
But, I mean, there's always cross-references in zoning ordinances, it's not uncommon.
But like, our own current one struggles with that in a number of places, like, it got.
Aren't we gonna have links, the links that cross-reference to?
We'll have links, but i- if you guys really want this cheat sheet to be the.
I'm just asking questions.
The dictating piece of this is what the setbacks are, then I would say we would cross-reference the cheat sheet in every district, and we would have to flip back and forth.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it needing to be a recorded document. I think it could be treated more like a cheat sheet, and maybe it's on, I don't know, maybe it is on, posted on the web, so the general public could see it.
Yeah, we have handouts and things on there that are not.
Yeah, they're not read into the.
You know, summary of what the ordinance says and what you might need to know for this particular item.
Yeah.
And I like the idea of just having that, I mean, sure, I, I'm fine with it being posted on the website, too, but I like having, the idea of having a cheat sheet in our hands, just because as we're working through this, we're gonna find that there are some things that work, and some things that don't work, and some things, you know, we wanna tweak, and, and I like having that little sheet of paper that I can kinda go.
Yeah, everything is there.
Copyright, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, that probably.
Cheat sheet not adopted formally.
Correct.
I, I mean, I, I would not say no to a cheat sheet, but I don't know if it's necessary, I guess. Like, I might end up trying to make my own.
You're an engineer, too.
So, yeah.
Are we all okay with that idea?
Yes.
Alright.
Alright, and the specially induced approval for building heights, so you've added incentives, so we've taken the building heights down, and then have incentives for them to go up, so green roofs, public, public and, public spaces, and then affordable housing. Um, and depending on what it is, it's either one to two stories and no more than two. Um, and the tool to do that, um, we had proposed would be a specially induced approval. Um, and there was some questions about whether that was the best mechanism, so what our response would be either to feel like it requires a public hearing, um, and notice, because you are going up and it is gonna impact people, um, so we could require a public hearing and just add standards for that decision, and have it separate from the specially induced. Um, you could treat it as a permitted use without a required notice of the additional height, again, I kinda stated, I'm really not a fan of that, um, or you could leave it as it is, don't change the draft, and just use that special land use, those standards.
Couldn't you make specific standards for different uses? Like, so, so can you make additional standards in addition to our standard standards for special land uses?
We're gonna need a cheat sheet for that as well.
Specific to this issue, you could, yeah.
So you could keep the language and then add bullet one?
Yeah.
Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, thank you.
So, and that would be if you felt like the specially induced standards weren't specific, weren't, wouldn't cover the situation.
So, what I was, so, in the last meeting when we were talking about this, my worry was the idea of being able to massage that give and take a little bit, right? I don't want somebody plopping down a tonne-square-foot plaza and being like, give me two floors now, right? I, I want what, what we're giving to, to equal what we're getting out of it. Um, and so I, my understanding of a special land use is we didn't really have that ability to kind of like weigh it, as much as like, is it gonna harm anybody, is it gonna, you know? So I, we could add more.
Specific to this issue.
You know, or I think we could add standards for an incentive, I mean, I, I think it comes, it's almost the same thing at that point, but I would like a public hearing.
Well, if we're having a, and that's where I was gonna go next, if we're having a public hearing, I think for the sake of simplicity, special land use automatically has a public hearing. If the only issue is wanting to have more specific factors or standards to consider when we're incentivizing, um, then maybe that's, maybe that's a solution, keep it a special land use, because it comes with a public hearing. I mean, I guess, I'm thinking out loud, the alternative is just to say you have to have a public hearing, right? And then what about all the other regulations that come along with special land use, like notice, when notice has to be published, and who has to be noticed?
Yeah.
So then you're establishing all new regulations for a special public hearing for just this.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so what we could do is keep it a special hearing, add additional standards in, in addition to the specially induced standards, um, around what I'm hearing is proportionality, and I think we have something similar to that in the PUD anyway, so we can use some of that language. Is there any other concerns in terms of looking at this height increase, um, beyond what would be, and I, I can look to find what those specially induced standards are, propose to come back to you, but just while I'm looking, just thinking out loud, are there, are, are there other stand, things that you were concerned about when look, or you would want to be able to look at?
I mean, it, to me, it would be the impact to adjacent properties, how close they are to residential, how it would affect those residential properties, but I think those would be general standards in the special land use.
Right, like, this is a question, what specifically about height?
Well, I, if you're, if you're a resident and you're literally ten feet away from a structure that's gonna be five feet, I would, I wouldn't wanna live there, I would see that as problematic for blocking sun, blocking, um.
Noise.
I mean, yeah, and you're looking at a wall, essentially.
Yeah, I mean.
More units, more traffic.
Yeah, but we're not allow, but this is not going above and beyond what would have already been allowed there for height anyways, so this is sort of that age-old problem of like, yeah, you're next to a property that could allow this in the first place, right?
I thought, I thought we're, I thought this is all about incentivizing so they can go higher than what's allowed.
So.
I think, I think there's a max.
Yes and no. Um, in some cases, it is what's currently allowed, we're bumping it down a floor to try and get some of those incentives for them, but in some cases, I think it's gone higher, too.
Yes, I think that's right, but the, the other thing to keep in mind is if someone comes to you and they've provided a reasonably-sized public space, and they're asking for that additional story or two, um, it, it is gonna block someone's view from what it currently is, I mean, there's no getting around that, so if the standard is your view from your house can't change, then this will never be a.
Right.
No, but if we're, I'm just saying, if we're talking about a, a specific example where I have a s- house and I'm ten feet away from this structure, that was two feet and is gonna, um, two stories, and it's gonna be four stories, that's impactful, that's not just blocking, changing my view, that's.
You could be completely in shade, or the majority of the.
Yeah.
How, how would we reconcile the fact that we're incentivizing that, and that you can objectively so, analyze the change between the two and the four to the impact of a house?
So the standards for special land use are compatibility with adjacent uses. The special land use must be designed, constructed, and in minor harmonious with the character of the adjacent properties and surrounding area, as compared to the impact of the permitted uses. Compatibility with the master plan, the proposed land use must be compatible in accordance with the goals, objectives of the City of Berkeley master plan, any associated sub-area and corridor plans, including the downtown master plan. Traffic impact, and that has a long list associated with it, impact on public services, um, the public, proposed special land use must be adequately served by essential public facilities and services, such as street, pedestrian, or bicycle facilities, police fire protection, drainage, refuse disposal, water, sewage, schools. Such services must be provided and accommodated without unreasonable burden, so, for instance, if you were going up four feet, and DPW said sewers can't handle it unless you're, you, you know, there, maybe there's something in structure, you could say, you would be able to say no. Compliance with zoning ordinance standards, impact on the overall environment. Um, and then there were specific requirements in terms of the following factors must also be considered by the planning commission when reviewing a special land use request, the nature and character of the activities, processes, materials, equipment, conditions of operation, either specifically or typically associated with the use, vehicle circulation and parking, outdoor activity, storage, work areas, hours of operation. storage, work areas, hours of operation, production of traffic, noise, vibration, fumes, odors, dusk, glare, light.
So, it was the first one you read?
Yes.
Can you read that one again, please?
Sure. And then, for anybody who's trying to follow along, this is on page ten dash three. Compatibility with adjacent uses. The special land use must be designed and constructed in a manner harmonious with the character of the adjacent properties and the surrounding area as compared to the impacts of the permitted uses.
As compared to the impacts of the permitted uses?
Yes, it says uses. So, then, 'cause it's a special land use, it's not really dealing with design. So, I think you could take that stand, against, in addition to the proportionality, add a standard about the additional height, about the impact of the height in terms of that design change on adjacent uses.
I don't know, I'm not sure the standards for incentive decision seems tricky.
Special land uses are, generally.
Special land uses are, and, and these incentives would be tricky. I mean, you're gonna put yourself in an uncomfortable position with them. These are things that you've said that you want, though, and the only, a lot of times, the only incentive you have is height. So, we can craft a second, a proportionality standard, and then something about the impacts of heights, and we can give examples like amount of shading, oh, it can't be more than a, a certain amount of shading. You, you don't want somebody's lot completely covered by shadow for more than fifty percent of the day.
And I just gave a, I just gave an, an extreme example. I, I don't anticipate that every one of them that we're gonna see will have that effect, and will be adjacent that close to residential. But I do think that that would be a concern where we'd want that to be somehow a factor that we consider in approving it.
Keep the special land use, reference the process in the public hearing portion, but maybe have a specific set of standards related to this particular decision.
If that's what we can do, that works, I think.
Okay.
Does that give us the ability? Uh, yeah. I guess if we have the proportionality part of it, it gives us that little bit of room, wiggle room to say, you know?
But with, with standards, if they're met?
No, not with a special land use. With a special land use, you have, it's, it's a discretionary decision.
It'll be hard.
Right, I mean, I guess if I have a, if I have a numerical standard that's met, like, what else am I? Do you know?
And I guess this is a question for you, too, Megan, so if we keep the special land use process, does that mean it's the city council's ultimate decision, then? So, you guys would be the recommending body?
Kinda like a PUD.
And considering the impact that this would have, I think that that's probably appropriate.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Versus just capping it at three floors and saying, here's the standards for that, and if somebody wants to build something, build it.
Get those incentives, right? So, if you could normally build at forty feet, we've bumped it back down now. You can only build two stories unless you give us this other stuff, right? Currently, they could go forty feet, but now we're saying, yeah, but give us a plaza, or give us some green infrastructure, or something, all these things that were identified that we really wanted in the city. So, they were allowed to build forty up until-
No, they could build forty today.
Right.
Yeah.
Kristen, I, I think in the last meeting, you had mentioned something to the effect of, does the public benefit have to be on the property proper?
Right.
And what, curious what, 'cause I, I'm actually working on a different project in a different community that we are doing just that, we're looking at public benefit down the street, and that is something that the community is, something that they wanna see happen, so they are willing to-
Under state law, that's only allowed under a PUD, an off-site improvement.
So, we did make a comment, I think, we could talk about this later, but we made a comment in the draft, in the staff comments, that improvement of a public space. The example I gave is, um, Robina. We have a large public right-of-way there compared to other areas, and if someone were building on the property adjacent to Robina and wanted to improve that public area, which we've been wanting to do for a long time, would we be able to switch off and give them the additional height? Because they're improving adjacent to the property in a space that we already own, instead of creating a public plaza and that, then opening that space to the public.
I think under strict interpretation of state law, that you, that off-site would only be allowed under a PUD. It wouldn't be allowed under this incentive. But let's say they wanted to improve, they wanted to create a public space that connects to that one on Robina, or they had a parking lot that they need to use, and they were gonna make that a public space that connected with that, then that would work under the incentive, the height incentive.
So, under strict definition, it'd have to be on the property of which the development is occurring on?
Or-
Or it's a PUD, and then they have some flexibility in that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if that's what you want, too, I think, then we should add to this table the double check that allows, the PUD allow, enables off-site improvements.
All right, so do we have more questions? Do we have more thoughts? Public hearing for height?
Seems like it goes along with the special land use.
It's a special land use, so it'll have a public hearing.
Special land use with the proportionality and effects of height rewording.
As the two additional standards for an incentive decision?
Yeah.
Yes.
I guess I have to see what it says, but I'd go with it, I suppose. Seems like a lot more to weigh, honestly, like, but-
But this, this is probably one of the only ways that, 'cause all, all those lots are small, for the most part. It seems to me that's, that's the prime vehicle for us to get some public benefit types of things, is if we, we allow that, with conditions, of course. At least something to consider, and if we're like, no, I'm not comfortable with this for X, Y, and Z, then, then we don't have it, we don't have to do it.
And we really just hand it to city council, and we guys make the hard decision. We just kinda gave you our opinion.
And, and there's, there's really just three things, right? It's the affordable housing, the green roof, and the public spaces.
Yep.
So, I think green roof is probably gonna end up being the most common one that we see.
Which only allowed for one floor, right?
Yep.
Yeah. I don't know, ar- architecturally, I'm not sure putting a green roof on is real economically. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the numbers on that, I just-
The dispensaries did it, that's why, I'm just saying, it seemed like it was pretty, like, you know, pretty strict thing we added, and they all did it.
They did all do it, but there was also things like rain gardens, and when you add, like, rain barrels, when you're like, what did you do with the rain barrel now? Do you use it to water? They're like, no, we just-
Just dump it out on the-
Clicked a box, so that's what we did.
Okay, all right. Deviations from design standards, so there was concern that they weren't strict enough. So, options are, you could require the variance to go through the ZBA. That would be a really, a high standard unless the ZBA was lenient, became lenient with those design standards, and if they felt uncomfortable with them, that might happen. We gave you an amended version of the current design standards at the very end of that memo, using your current section, um, in the zoning ordinance, which was all about design. And if you like those better, we could switch those out, or we could just leave the draft as is.
So, can it be as simple as something like, the planning commission can waive portions of the design standards, if, or allow deviations if applicant can prove and PC finds that meet, meeting the standards is unduly burdensome, or something along those lines, like, not as hard as ZBA, but not like, yeah, we have to prove that we tried, and you have to find that we tried.
But what does that mean, unduly burdensome? 'Cause there's always gonna be a cost, is that, how do you decide whether that cost is too burdensome?
Or some other term, I, I guess my, like, I, I realize that there has to be some flexibility in what we're doing, but we really want them to meet the standards, right? ZBA seems like it might be too far, because we are built out, so there are going to be times that we need to be flexible, but I want it really hard.
Then you should join the ZBA.
Yeah, um-
Does that make sense?
I- Then, in that case, if you wanna make it, I mean, what you described, to me, seems very easy. In that, it's gonna depend on who's in that planning commission seat, and then those sites of-
That's true.
Deviations could just be given out like candy. What we tried to do with both of the different sets of standards is to really put something in play that then related back to either the zoning ordinance, and something that they need to meet, um, in terms of, and then them, and also for them to give you a reason, like, on item six on the last page, we asked them, the applicant must explain, and the planning commission must find that the proposal implements the character areas. So, they have to explain how their design meets that, and that's in your current code now. And I'm not sure how that's helped you or hindered you, but I think that is the place where there's that flexibility, but it, it ties it to something.
And I do think the standards that Megan has suggested talk about the highlights of the design guidelines when they're talking about high-quality design and construction. Well, that's durable materials, right? We can make sure that that's included. The roof compatibility was a huge thing in the design standards. And then the number five, the cus- customer entrance was another big thing, too, and having ways to delineate that entrance.
Where, where is it in the, the draft zoning ordinance, the current language?
It is, I think, ten- Six oh nine. Uh, it is six oh nine.
Exceptions and waivers.
I remember that now. Six oh nine F. So, what's currently proposed is the deviation will not adversely impact public health, safety, and welfare. The deviation maintains compatibility with adjacent uses. The deviation is compatible with the master plan in accordance with the goals and objectives of the master plan, any associated sub-area corridor plans. The deviation will not adversely impact essential public services and facilities such as streets, pedestrians, bicycle, facilities, police, fire, da-da-da-da, and the deviation will be in compliance with all other zoning ordinance chapters. No.
Page one thirty-five.
So, I mean, the, just pointing out, we call them waivers in the index, but deviations in the substance. Okay, we're talking about a development in a site design, that, that's in a site design district. Because it's in a site design district, we already know that it maintains compatibility with adjacent uses. So, you're saying the deviation could be allowable if whatever they're asking we deviate from continues to be compatible with adjacent uses?
Correct, according to number two, like, point two on this.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I guess I'm just trying to, I do, I, I understand the concern that somebody raised about it being very easy to get a deviation, because most of these are already have to be met for the site design, for the use that's coming in there anyway, based on the fact that it's a site design district. And so, I, I guess I'm trying to think of an example of a deviation.
About if they came in with a different use, that's not-
Well, these are just from the, uh, for the design standards, right? So, like, my argument was, all you have to show is it's not gonna hurt anybody for you to change it, right?
So-
So, that's why we got the newer version.
Which is much more specific, I think, to the guidelines.
So, somebody would really have to say why they weren't using, like, why they have less transparency than is required. And like, for instance, in another community where I've had this, we've, we've input in guidelines and standards, one of them was requiring a front door to face the, requiring that-
Yeah, front door faced the road, or-
Face the road, and like-
So, you have other communities that use site design districts?
Yeah, typically, they're more form-based districts, so, yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get my head wrapped around, why do we have to have different standards? Why aren't we just going special land use route? We have district designate, uh, site design requirements for a reason?
So, one that comes up all the time is the transparency one, and it comes up just how it came up at the new restaurant at Beverly and Coolidge. They're increasing the transparency, but they're not getting to where the-
The ordinance requires.
The ordinance requires, and that's a huge improvement for that building. Are you willing to say, we'll waive some of that transparency requirement, 'cause we feel like you've hit every other box?
And it's an already bu- building already there.
Right, they are doing, uh, aesthetic facade changes, but they're not rebuilding the walls or anything.
But this would apply to new buildings also?
And existing, yes.
Yeah.
So, this doesn't just fix a problem that we're seeing, this gives an opportunity for essentially variances without going through the process of a variance.
Yeah, so, if you wanted to make the bar really high, then I would take these out and say they have to go to the ZBA.
That's gonna be really hard for existing buildings, that would be my only caveat.
Well, then, maybe we limit it to existing buildings, and not allow it for brand-new buildings that might come in and ask for zero transparency for whatever reason.
You could do that in, in cases of redevelopment, or whatever you wanna put, you could do that.
Do you understand what I'm, like, are you-
Yeah, 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 no.
I, I feel like we're essentially-
Can we legally do that?
I feel like we're sidestepping the variance requirements. We're not saying, just as it relates to these minor issues.
We incorporated a lot of the design standards into the new zoning ordinance, but something to keep in mind is some of it is kind of wishy-washy, right? You can choose this element or this element, but it should generally have this feel, like, it, it's not always so prescriptive. So, there is room for interpretation there, too. I feel like things that go to the ZBA, right, it's fourteen feet or fifteen feet.
Right.
But that's what you're talking about with transparency?
For that particular one, but there are other elements that are not like that. We encourage you to use, um, courtyards and arcades and things, and that's not applicable most of the time. So, there are some other things where we can't necessarily go down a box and say, check, 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 check. Like, we might be able to with more typical dimensional variances.
So, I guess I would be more comfortable if we limited the scope of the planning commission's authority to deviate from the site design standards, 'cause right now, it's broad enough that it encompasses every single regulation and, and standard. I mean-
But just as far as the design goes, right, like, we're not talking about-
Yeah.
A setback. A setback or parking or, you know, we're talking about how it physically looks.
Yeah. Like, building materials is one that comes to mind.
Gotcha.
If someone came in and said, I want to build something our standard right now, in the design standard, it talks about majority masonry materials and things like that, and they came in and said, we're going to do metal panels, right? Those are still popular now, and fifty-one percent. And they go to the ZBA, what, how would that ever be a hardship to make it all brick? It could never be passed.
Right.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
What other elements are there in the site design? Building materials.
So each.
Articulation.
Each district is different, so the downtown probably has the.
Just a few examples.
The most, so I'll, I'll go down there. Just got to scroll a little bit, thanks for the patience. So the design standards in the downtown, buildings must have balanced compositions and forms. Roofs must be compatible with the architectural style of the building and the context of the surrounding area. Building entrances must be designed with one or more of the following: a canopy, overhang arch, or entrance, pillars and columns, recesses or projections in the building facade surrounding the entrance, peaked roof or raised parapet over the door, windows surrounding the entrance. Building articulation for buildings and wall space in the street are required to ensure the building is not monotonous in appearance and must meet the following standards. Buildings must be subdivided through the location of architectural treatments and arrangement of openings, doors, and windows that are compatible in size and scale to the surrounding areas. The maximum linear length of any uninterrupted building facing the, facing public streets or parks is thirty feet. So again, somebody might have some sort of unique design where they have like forty-five and twenty-five and four. So they would want that type of flexibility. Or the, the roof might be very unique, but let's say it's for an existing building with a marquee and they wanted to put something on that, on it that complements that, that is different than the rest of it.
And doesn't want itself to a variance.
Right, and I feel like those are things that you, planning commission, should be doing at the table when, and you should have the flexibility to do that. So, um, and also where I've seen also those articulations get off is somebody, like, a lot of times what these design guidelines or standards assume is the building is sitting with its front facade parallel to the street. Well, there may be some instances where the building's cockeyed. And so only maybe a portion of the building is there, or they might do some different design in order to get there. So, um, and then also something that might come up that you may not want to do is, this is in the downtown, for buildings over two stories, a minimum five-foot minimum stepback from the lower building facade must be implemented for third and higher stories. When exactly adjacent with no parking line between the proposed building and the parcels zoned or used for single-family detached uses, the step-down portion of the building must be toward the residential area. So again, that was those stepbacks that you had talked about. And then there was, there's a separate section G for additions and modifications. So, um, and those are a little looser. Any addition must be compatible in scale materials, the character of building. New exterior additions are constructed to minimize the loss of historic materials so that the character-defining faces like cornices or brackets are not obscured, managed, or destroyed or covered. A lot of times people will put like metal paneling over things. And rooftop additions, adding a third floor or more, must have that stepback. And then it has design guidelines, and the guidelines are really not enforceable. These are when special land use comes in, or maybe they have that incentive for the building height, you can be like, hey, you should do this. So, I mean, there's a lot of specificity in there, and there are things where it could be like, yeah, like, this doesn't really, like, you have a really good design, I don't want to send you, sending them to the ZBA or.
Okay, you've convinced me.
So.
That was helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, so what does the ask again, is to make this more strict?
I think it is to either go send them to the ZBA, leave it as-is, or do the suggested.
Revisioned.
Revision, it's at the very end, on page twelve.
Of the memo.
Of the memo.
I'm comfortable with the revision.
Any other thoughts?
Sorry, are the revisions, what, I guess Kristin and Megan, you guys were, uh, suggesting?
I, I think these are better than what's in the current draft, they're more tailored to this particular circumstance. And I think it also, number six on there, really puts the burden on the applicant to justify why they need that and ties it back to something that you have community agreement about, which is those design guidelines. I think also in terms of your concern of everybody's going to ask for this, I think the first three or four of them, you can set the tone. Um, and then your staff would definitely tell people what the tone is. And might suggest, watch this video.
I'm comfortable with these changes as well.
I'm trying to find them again, where are they?
Oh, on the ma- on the PC memo.
Uh-huh.
The memo that made interactive for us.
For this meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, page twelve.
Oh, page twelve. I mean, yeah, that's what you guys, I suggest, it seems fine, the ZBA thing does not seem the right way to go. I'm okay with that.
All right.
All right. Suggested revisions. Revisiting office.
So I'm just going to say, my personal opinion is that we shouldn't, I, I, I don't, I, I think we should decide it on a use-by-use and not block out a particular use and say they're just not allowed in the first floor, because some of those uses we may very well want. That's just my opinion. I understand that, I, I believe I understand city council's position, and it's opposite, my opinion. And, um, so for what it's worth, I think that if we evaluate an applicant on a case-by-case basis and we can decide whether it's compatible with a walkable community, to me, that, that's going to be the best avenue so that we're not leaving vacant buildings and we're able to fill them and we're able to evaluate them on a case-by-case basis. That's my opinion.
Although, I guess that last part you just said, that we won't leave vacant buildings, that also depends on it being approved by the planning commission, right? Because if it is up to us, it could be voted not.
Well, the city council.
Absol-.
Or city council, right?
Absolutely, and it's happened.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's happened, and I, and I, I'm just saying, um, there might be something that comes in, and, and I'm not saying it's anything that we've considered. It could be something, and we're like, you know what, this would be perfect right there, but technically it's office or medical or whatever use that's not allowed there. And this gives us that flexibility, that's all.
So my opinion would go the opposite way, and it's like, it's, what, four blocks?
I think three.
Three, okay. Thanks. It's three blocks, um, in our core downtown, where we really want it to be a lively and active sort of place. We have two miles of downtown. So to take and concentrate this and say no office here, I don't think hurts things terribly. In fact, we've, we've pushed it from that area on Coolidge too, to just being this spot on Twelve Mile. And I would say, if this doesn't work and in five years we're like, yeah, we can't fill these buildings, revisit it. But I think, um, what you want in a downtown are those active, thriving places that stay open late and you can look in and see interesting things happening in the windows, and, um, that's my thought.
I was definitely on board with, uh, um, a filled building is better than a vacant building just sitting there. And the medical office seemed like a, a good solution to that, because you'd have patients coming in and out. But then I also hear the concern about the downtown area becoming a Beaumont campus, and I don't think that we would want that for our downtown area specifically. And since it is such a small few blocks that we're talking about, I'm more inclined with keeping the office out of that core downtown area. And, um, yeah, like you said, maybe revisit, if, if the, those buildings are still vacant a couple of years from now, maybe we need to reevaluate that. But for right now, I think that's the, the direction I'd like to see it going, is keeping it retail and keeping it more vibrant.
So that would be, yeah, I guess, so the question at hand is regarding the ordinance rewrite, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Specifically for this property.
No, specifically for this area.
This area, yes, yes.
Three blocks.
Yeah, yeah, the three blocks.
Has a very cool, will be the post office, one day being redeveloped.
Right, so I guess.
Or a church, churches are closing.
Question, is it encompass all four corners of Wakefield, or is it just the street to the, to the west?
Um, no, it doesn't, and so.
Because the post office is on the east side.
Oh, so, sorry, so I misspoke.
Right.
So it's from here, so this is the east side of Wakefield to the west side of Gardner.
Of, east side of the street?
So this is the eastern edge of that corner, so it's the, it doesn't incorporate these, sorry.
The northeast.
Northwest, southwest, northeast, southeast corners, these two intersections.
So it does take all four corners of Wakefield and Twelve Mile?
No, it doesn't take the.
Northeast and southeast of Wakefield, it does not include those.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm. Sure, yeah, that's true, thanks.
I can barely see it.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, better.
I mean, this is what's on in the Google Drive too, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I can zoom in here, but they all look the same colored.
Well, because that's because we're talking about not just the zoning district, but the street type.
The street design, or street types?
Street type, so the street type is gonna.
A, and that we call it A, and what was the other one?
Walkable area streets.
A and walkable.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any other A?
Nope, that's the only place.
Just the three blocks on Twelve Mile. So, short answer is I agree with Lisa on this, uh, Kevner, sorry, Jared. A little different, uh, yeah, no, I agree. I, well, because I was also thinking like, our downtown, I feel like, has been, become very disjointed. I mean, it was kind of disjointed as an L, and so now it's like, like, definitely, I guess, east of Wakefield, it doesn't feel like a downtown. West of it, for the three blocks, does, so, yeah. And then Coolidge, maybe a couple of blocks down there feel a little, a little better, but, you know, it's a very disjointed, um, as-is, and so that's a half a block of, I guess, the three blocks, so. And not to say, the current does allow for office, just not on the first floor, correct?
The current.
Or I guess the proposed rewrite, the.
Proposed rewrite.
Would include office, but not on the first floor.
Not on the first floor, right.
Now, my hope is what happens is that, like, we fill all of that stuff and we go, hey, we should maybe make this a little bit bigger, because like, it's really thriving.
Unless it's through PUD, is that correct?
Yeah, they would have the option, option of a PUD.
So if they came with a PUD with office on the first floor, that could be looked at, entertained, obviously that's more work on the applicant, but that is an option for them for that. So it's not like there's zero option.
That is an option for them, yes. It's not like you're closing all the doors.
Right, okay.
Just, one's a little harder to open.
Sure. Or if they had proposed office on the second floor or third floor with other incentives. So, okay. Yeah, so, I mean, with all that, I, I would agree with. Sure, Kevner.
Okay, so, as-is.
So as proposed by staff, is what you would like to pursue, so that no, in the downtown, on these three blocks, no first-floor office, second-floor office would be a permitted use. And then in those other, in, elsewhere in the gateway district and in the downtown district where it's walkable area streets, offices are permitted use on first floor and second floor.
That's how it would be written, yes.
What would a Kinko's be? Would that be office?
The current ordinance has print shop listed, but I think we would consider that.
Retail, right?
Retail, yeah.
Okay, um, so now we look at what, um, we want our actions to be. We can request changes, unrevised draft, recommend to city council as presented, or recommend to city council with revisions. Thoughts?
I'm fine recommending to city council with revisions.
This is, you prepare all the revisions and then hand them the completed.
Yep.
Can you do that and send us a, you know, like, as you're sending their packet to them, can you, for those of us who are crazy and will probably read the whole thing again for the like twenty-seventh time?
Yeah, if you want.
I mean, it should be available.
City council's package, sure.
Awesome.
It's online too, but yeah.
That's true, yeah.
And, and to be clear, the revisions are the four items we talked about.
Five. The fifth is the new one we just added.
And everything listed in that table.
Right, everything, everything in the table, I thought the four in the memo, what would be the fifth?
The office conversation.
The one we just added, the.
Yeah, office in the downtown.
That wasn't in the memo, right, that was one we just added?
No, that was in the table, that's the suggestion in the table, right, yeah.
So you, do you need reminding of what the four were?
Uh, no, they're in the memo, but I guess I'm just, I guess I didn't realize that.
You family dwelling, rear yards.
Yeah, design standards is the last, yeah. So the, the, okay.
So in the chart that she did, it said, she referenced that the last page of the memo is some proposed changes to address an issue that came up, wasn't called out as number five in the memo, but technically that's what we made a motion on. Well, technically, we made the motion on all of the changes in this chart.
Yeah.
With the modification of.
If you were to make that recommendation with revisions, you need a formal, you, you need a formal motion.
Well, no, I didn't make a motion because I didn't know what everyone else was thinking.
I might be the odd person out, but I was kind of thinking maybe it should come back to us. Don't beat me up, Megan.
If I was sitting in your shoes, that's probably what I would want.
There's, there's quite a few changes. And we're missing two commissioners too.
So my first thought, of course, and, and I think it's just because I'm a control freak, right, is that I was like, ah, yeah, I want to see it again. And then I'm like, I've seen this enough times, I, I think they can navigate this, but like, my gut was like, I want to see it again. I can live with either. I don't want city councils presented, I at least want to be able to like, look and then be like, wait, city council, they forgot this part, or whatever, but.
They will have the two readings.
But I could live with either of those.
I'm, I'm fine with going the other route, I'm not, I don't feel strongly one way or another.
I don't feel super strong, I mean, if you guys all said, no, this is, I'd be like, okay. But my gut is, eh, I'd like to see it again, but we got two commissioners not here.
That's a good point.
Will we all be here next month?
Probably not.
Probably not.
I guess a proposed timeline for the revisions and then, a- assuming that they are, you know, passed.
Our next meeting, we have a shorter turnaround time, because our next meeting is at eighteen.
Three weeks.
Oh, yeah, it's a three weeks.
Uh, December, so I need to get packets to you the week before, so that would give Megan like one week. Uh, December, so I need to get packets to you the week before, so that would give Megan like one week and a few days.
Clearly, that's not gonna be a thing.
I would expect you to do that.
You'd probably look at January.
Yeah, yeah. I would feel more comfortable with that.
So January, assuming we, uh, recommend as presented or if there's minor revisions.
Should be as presented, I think.
Should be as presented, right, but, you know, if there's like minor medical things or stuff, then it would then need to go to the city council. Would it get on for the, I guess, February?
Yeah, hopefully it'd be on the February agenda. Council's doing two meetings a month generally next year, so they'd have an opportunity for two times in February. Um, let me look at the, so if you did Jan- January...
It's a last.
The twenty-seventh, council's first meeting would be February third, so actually that would not work. Um, it would have to be the second meeting at February for council, the seventeenth.
And then would they...
They could also have these basically safe options. They could approve the first reading as presented, they could request changes and ask if they come back for consideration.
And they have to do this twice?
They have to do it twice. Usually the second reading is, is more of a formality because those things are going to address, that need to be addressed the first time around. So if that, if they were to approve on the seventeenth, then it could theoretically come back for the March third meeting, and then it takes effect thirty days after that. So you'd have a new ordinance up and operating in, hopefully sometime in April, worst case, May.
Is that in this year?
Keeps us like, poor massive building time, right?
Um, I mean, we'll start to see people in February, March.
Getting ready for the thaw.
Yeah, and even in the winter, I mean, it's pretty dead in December, but people start inquiring January, February.
Would you anticipate any issues with prolonging it a couple of months because of the holidays kind of screwing us up?
The only thing that I think is of a more immediate concern is, and concern maybe isn't the right word, but something that's going to come up before then is this medical office and the Rite Aid property. Um, because, um, the, the owners, right, could have, have a tenant that's very interested. Office is a first-floor special land use right now in the current ordinance, so I would anticipate that that will come before you as a special land use request before this is effective. And it may, that may be the case even if you were to recommend tonight with revisions. I, I don't know exactly what their timeline is, but I know they're anxious to get someone in that space.
Sure.
So the reality is, is it's maybe a month difference, um, because you're not rewriting it in a couple of weeks to get to council, right? It's probably going to be a month before it gets to council anyways, right?
It's probably a month, so it would probably go to council in January, I would think. If you guys approved with revisions, or recommended approval with revisions this evening, I think we'd make the January council meeting because February, or December packets are due the sixth of December.
Oh, that's next week.
Yeah, that's next week.
So they're...
It'd be, it'd be, it, yeah, yeah.
So it's a month, and then obviously you have no control over what council does in terms of how long they take to approve.
Um...
Well, in that case, it's like the month is a moot point.
Yeah, and I guess maybe it, maybe it does make sense for us to have it in complete form and sign off on it when it gets handed to council instead of, you know. Yes, we trust them that they made all the right revisions.
Yeah, no.
I know you want us to see it. You don't, you don't care either way.
I would take the time, I guess, at this point, yeah.
For it to come back to us.
Yeah.
All right.
With knowing all that timeline stuff.
All right, so, we don't actually need to make a motion then, do we?
Um, I mean, it could be helpful to postpone consideration.
Okay. Someone post, make a motion to postpone consideration?
I'd make a motion to postpone consideration of the, um, public hearing. Oh, man, do I have to read this all out?
All right.
The consideration, the consideration, the ordinance of the City of Berkeley to repeal Chapter ninety-four signs, repeal and replace Chapter one thirty-eight zoning, and repeal and replace the City of Berkeley zoning map in order to move sign regulations to the zoning ordinance, match the recommendations of the master plan, and modernize sign and zoning regulations.
Support.
Voice or roll?
The, a roll call would be good. Okay. Can I go ahead?
Yeah, please.
Commissioner Dallow?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamami?
Yes.
Commissioner Arnsman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
Chair Kember?
Yes.
Kristen, can I bother you for a print copy once it's all ready to go?
Only because this is a very special thing. I'm not usually going to do printouts, but yes, yes, I can get you a print.
You need a Kinko's.
Think of her as your new marketing.
I just, I, I usually print everything. I'm a paper person.
I'm the same way too.
Terrible about that.
I'm the same way.
Especially if this is our last kick at it, I, I'd probably want to look.
I can press print for you.
I should use both, screen and...
I probably will.
That's the best way to do it, for sure.
Okay, the twenty-twenty-five meeting schedule, um, everybody has that.
I'll just make a statement for the record that the third Tuesdays of every month are not good for me. I have a client that meets on the third Tuesday of every month, and so for two meetings, I'm not available. I should say, for a minimum of two meetings, I'm not available.
I think we only have one third Tuesday meeting in the draft.
I thought there were two. I saw...
I got March, and then I flagged a couple other ones.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking...
December.
December, it, like, the twenty-third feels like it's a problem.
No, the December third is a third, isn't it?
The twenty-third, it would be the twenty-third of December.
Is that the third or the fourth?
Oh, it's the fourth. I thought there were two meetings in that calendar that was the third Monday, Tuesday.
This year there were two, the one...
And so next year there aren't?
Next year there aren't, because the dates...
Okay, then, I thought there were two, but I might have just saw it wrong.
Unless you guys think that, um, you know, it is the Tuesday before Christmas Eve or the day before Christmas Eve. There's a Tuesday before Thanksgiving, a Tuesday after Memorial Day. I just flagged those because I, I want to make sure we have quorum, so if anyone knows that those dates are automatically probably going to be tough, we could change that.
I don't know at this point.
Yeah, I don't, I can't pin that part of it.
They're fine for me.
Yeah, they're fine for me as well.
The December one is the only one I think that's hard, and it's not that I probably will even be anywhere, it's just that it is the day before Christmas Eve and life is insane. And depend, if it's a simple, easy one, it probably wouldn't be an issue, but if it's something I may have to look at and study.
So we could do that one the six, the sixteenth, obviously then, um, Commissioner Hamami's out, but if everyone feels like that, then it could, it could be the sixteenth. The only reason I think I would really make it tough is if someone submitted something and I have no reason to say you can't be on the agenda, right? But otherwise, I think we try to keep it light. We would put like a big text amendment on or something.
A new zoning ordinance, right?
A PUD.
But that could happen.
Right?
It could happen, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, like... Also, when I think of the public, right, if it happened to be a PUD or a public hearing, trying to do that the day before Christmas Eve and Christmas feels...
Like a lot of people probably wouldn't appreciate that.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm going to be working on that day.
Yeah, me too.
I'll be working, yeah, like, I only get the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, right, same here, maybe, yeah.
Do you guys want to do that one the sixteenth then?
I mean, it's fine, it doesn't matter to me.
It'd be my preference.
I got no preference.
It's your decision, don't...
No preference.
No preference, no preference, no preference. You don't want it to change because it messes you up?
It just means I can't come. I mean, you guys know that in advance.
Let, how about we change it to the sixteenth? And if s, like, as we're talking about like next week's, or next month's meeting, if we then, you know...
We can always change it back, right?
Two people are like, I can't show up, and you're like, I already told you I can't show up on those days, then we can maybe push it back.
Right, we could cancel and have a special meeting.
Okay.
If we had to.
For the PUD. That we're for sure gonna have because we've been talking about it.
December twenty-third of next year.
December, December's meeting's gonna get canceled because there's no items on the agenda.
That's not how it works. We're gonna definitely have a...
All right, are we okay with all the other, um, all the other dates so far?
So I told you there were two I was gonna miss.
Right?
There you go, yeah.
Yep.
August will be on my daughter's birthday.
Hey.
Um, but that's okay. We'll have fun beforehand.
February's in mine.
February's on yours? Nice. I was here on my birthday once.
Have you?
All right, um...
I do need a motion for that one.
Oh, we need a motion for that. Somebody want to make a motion? To accept the calendar?
With the December change.
With the December change?
So moved.
Second.
Can I voice call this one?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, yay, meeting schedule. Liaison reports.
Uh, ZBA did not meet this, or this, earlier this month, so I got nothing.
It did not make chamber, but I am, they are doing a ribbon covin- cutting for Eleven Mile Dispensary soon. Their Christmas party is coming up, and there's a retreat, I think, in January, like the, like the couple-hour meeting. I think that's about it that I know of.
Speaking of, that reminded me, did the gorilla come off of that building because we were not allowing it?
Yes.
Okay, because I drove by that and I was like, I'm pretty sure that's not allowed, and if it is allowed, we need to change that. Okay.
What, wait, what gorilla?
There was this giant inflatable gorilla on the, um...
In the dispensary?
Yeah.
Oh.
I don't know why I did this, because he doesn't actually do that. I don't have much for DDA. They're still talking about their, uh, their strategic plan and how much they need to, uh, get into that and how much they need to change that. Um, all right, does anybody have anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Ooh, come on, somebody's got a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned at nine oh-two. Happy Thanksgiving.
I didn't even get to read my comments.
Oh, shit.